March Spring Town Meeting for kindergarten, first, second, and third. So we gave you the option to do something about spring, or you could do something for Women's History Month. And we had a lot of participation just from our younger grades. So you guys are lucky enough to have your own one and only town meeting today. We do have a special guest with us from eighth grade today. And Ryan Castillo is going to read us a poem by... Where's your poem by, Ryan? Langston Hughes. And then Ryan also wrote his own poem that was inspired by Langston Hughes. Ready?
My name is Ryan Castillo. I am from the eighth grade. And my class did this poem from Langston Hughes, and we were inspired by it. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams die. Life is a broken little bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams go. Life is a bitter field, frozen with snow. And I also did my very own poem inspired by Langston Hughes. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams expire. Life is like a car without no tires.
Next, we have Ms. Norwood's class singing a song about spring.
Good morning, everyone. This is my kindergarten, third grade, newcomer class. All of my friends are from Afghanistan and speak Pashto. So before we sing, we're going to teach you some words in Pashto. First word in English, we have a spring in Pashto. Next word we have is bird in Pashto. Next word is bee. Ladybug. Butterfly. Frog.
...music for a child's heart, body, and mind. Spring is here on the CD Seasonal Songs in Motion by The Learning Station. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how I know. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how we know. To the bird, ah ah. Stretch your wings to the bird, ah ah. Clap your hands to the bird, ah ah. Do anything, look around for another side of spring. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how I know. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how we know. To the bee, ah ah. Stretch your wings to the bee, ah ah. Clap your hands to the bee, ah ah. Do anything, look around for another side of spring. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how I know. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how we know. To the lady, ah ah. Stretch your wings to the lady, ah ah. Clap your hands to the lady, ah ah. Do anything, look around for another side of spring. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how I know. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how we know. To the bird, ah ah. Stretch your wings to the bird, ah ah. Clap your hands to the bird, ah ah. Do anything, look around for another side of spring. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how I know. Spring is here, spring is here, I think I know. It just so happens that is how we know. To the bird, ah ah. Stretch your wings to the bird, ah ah. Clap your wings to the bird, ah ah. Do anything, look around for another side of spring. Wait, wait, there's someone's feet up! Alright, eyes, thumbs up, here we go! There's another one! Thumbs up!
Class is going to sing a song about flowers growing, and this is spring.
There are so many pretty colors. Singing of flowers, flowers all around. Flowers that are moving, growing in the ground. Flowers of color, they look so pretty too. Red and blue, orange and yellow, blue and purple too. Red, blue, orange, yellow, blue and purple too. Singing of flowers, flowers all around. Flowers that are moving, growing in the ground. Flowers of color, they look so pretty too. Red and blue, orange and yellow, blue and purple too. Red, blue, orange, yellow, blue and purple too.
These dual-language kindergarten classes. We can start to start by it. Happy Spring! So in our classroom, we listened to a story called "I See Spring." Afterward, all of the children were able to share something that they see in the spring. So we wrote about it, and we made some illustrations as well. We'd like to share them with you. Ready? What do you see in the spring?
I see a butterfly.
Show it to me in your picture. Brianna, what do you see in the spring?
A cute little bunny.
Little bunny. Melvin, what do you see in the spring?
I'm... I'm here playing.
Good job. A kite. Kelly, what do you see in the spring?
A rainbow.
Kelly sees a rainbow. And Zeri, what do you see in the spring?
I see flowers.
Good job. Flowers in the spring. Class wrote about what they like about spring. And some of our friends are going to share what we grew up. I have a makeup class lesson.
I like spring because it's almost Easter. I even smell flowers, grass, and nature. I can be, have fun. I can go outside.
I like spring because I love the flowers when they come out.
I like spring because we can visit the beach.
I like spring because we can jump and puddle.
I love spring. It gets warm. I can smell flowers.
I like spring because we see animals that we don't see in winter. You smell flowers and grass. You can have fun.
I smell nature and flowers, and you can play outside too. And also, you can go outside to the park.
I like spring because you can have fun. I like spring because we see animals that we don't see in winter.
I can play on the playground. We smell flowers.
That's it. Ms. Gannon, Ms. Sterling's third grade class.
I remember a woman who was a judge and a lawyer. She helped the people that was not allowed in school. That only nine students allowed in school. But the teachers told her, "I had made her go embarrass because they screwed up." And then now she felt much better that she grew up as a lawyer.
I remember a woman who was the youngest woman ever elected to Congress.
I remember a woman who was born in Poland in 1867 and was a scientist who committed cancer.
I remember a woman who played tennis. Then she started getting glade. She became a bad player. And then she gave a charity to men.
I remember some women of Williams because she was a good tennis player. And her mom and her father teach her. Teach her how to be a good tennis player because her mother, I mean her father, because she knew how to do, she would do a good tennis player. I remember a woman who made a good career.
I remember a woman who scared all the women from the country.
I remember a woman who was an American pilot. And she had a dream, and it was that she went on to offer the first book of rock and roll.
I remember a woman who showed the world that both black people and women could be artists. She never got to own any first book, but the first book remained for her in acting.
I remember a person who works at NASA. It was an astronaut that was, and her name is Jessica. She is an American astronaut. She wants to go to Mars, but she has to go some skill so she can go to Mars. And an astronaut who dropped his spaceship. She needed practice, practice, and practice. She could go to space, and she covered, got the space. If she practiced, practiced, and her boss told her, "You're just ready."
I remember a daughter of a man who knows about ballet and also wins a lot of trophies.
I remember a girl when she was, she was a famous tennis player. Her sister, her dad wanted to teach her when she was only 14. Then, but her dad got kind of scared, didn't want her to go more hard enough. Because he was scared that the people were looking down at her. So then, her sister got a broken injury. Then, when her dad went to the game, they started threatening when he spoke to her dad.
These are just the few women who have inspired us. There are so many more.
Alright, up next, Ms. Carter's third grade class has a couple songs that they're going to present. Here we have the hashtag #famous3rdgraders who have been learning about amazing trailblazers in the world. One of them, Maya Angelou. There's an amazing poem that she wrote that I think you will enjoy. And then we're going to do two special dances for you guys. By the way, this is the first time they've been up on stage. So they're a little nervous, but I think they're going to rock it. Right? In that stick room. To yourself.
Life doesn't frighten me. I wrote this poem for all children who whistle in the dark and who refuse to admit that they are frightened out of their wits. Shadows on the wall, noises down the hall. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Bad dogs barking loud, victors in a crowd. That doesn't frighten me at all. Mean old mother doos, lions on the loose. They don't frighten me at all. Dragons breathing flames on my counterpane. That doesn't frighten me at all. I go boom, make them shoo. I make fun of them when they run. I won't cry, so they flunk. I just smile, and they go, "Why?" Life doesn't frighten me at all. Tough guys in a fight, on the lawn at night. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Pampers in the park, strangers in the dark now. They don't frighten me at all. That new classroom where boys all pull my hair. They don't frighten me at all. Kissing little girls with their hair in curls. They, they don't frighten me at all. Don't show me frogs and snakes and listen for my screams. If I'm afraid at all, it's only in my dreams. I have got a matted charm that I keep up my sleeve. I can walk the ocean floor and never have to breathe. Life doesn't frighten me at all, not at all, not at all. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Life doesn't frighten me at all.
The performance was enchanting and completely captivating at so many different levels. From the beginning to the end, just give it a try. All right, up next we have... Up next we have Ms. Lopez's third grade who put together, um, a video.
My parents are from Puerto Rico. I went to school to go to Hoya in 2009. I became the first Latina in the third unit to serve as a Supreme Court Justice. Today I continue to fight discrimination.
I'm Ellen Edward Chuah. I was born on May 10, 1958. I was born in Los Angeles, California. I was the first Latina astronaut to go into space. I had four successful missions and a thousand hours in space. At school, I like studying rap.
I'm Erica. I was born in, in Mexico in 1907. At the age of 15, I had an accident in that, and that's when I started painting. I became a very famous Mexican painter.
My name is Sylvia Mendez. I was born on June 7, 1936 in Santa Ana, California. When I was a child, we moved to West Mister, California. My parents tried to register me in West Mister Elementary School, but they said that school was for only white. And I had to go to a school for Mexican. In 1945, my family joined four other Mexican and American families in Sula's school district. We move the case which ended segregation in four school districts in California.
All right, we just want to say thank you to all the teachers and students um, for participating and putting together such a nice performance today. Thank you to the families for coming. And that's the end of our Marchtown meeting. We'll see you again in April.